Called a meeting to order Monday, April 21st, 2025. Wes, Tim Bocock, Fee Willoughby.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, sir.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting minutes from April 7th, 2025. Those were sent out last week for everyone to look at. If there aren't any questions or concerns about the bills, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I make a motion that we approve the bills.
Are we doing the bills or the minutes?
The minutes, I'm sorry. I said bills. Minutes. Motion by Clayton.
Second.
Second by George. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we got the approval from ratification of the bills. Getting old's a terrible thing. Mine don't work correctly.
Speak for yourself.
So again, if there's not any questions or concerns about the bills, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve those.
I'll make a motion to accept and approve the bills.
Okay. Motion by Terry, second by Billy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll go down next to rescind ordinance number 2025-02. Arlene, you want to expound on that a little bit?
Yes. There was a motion or an ordinance that was passed back in January, and I sent an email just to kind of give everybody up to speed before tonight. I think actually Lori sent it out for me. But the proper procedure with a tax ordinance, there has to be two public hearings. This one did not have two public hearings. So I think the proper channel, we need to rescind the vote, needs to go back to planning and zoning. They need to have a public hearing on it, then we need to have a second public hearing on it. It was just something that was pointed out. You know, I just think it needs to be corrected, and that's the proper procedure. And I put some details in the email as well, so.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Arlene, this part of this is we go above and beyond what KLC or KLC?
Yes. Our local ordinance requires two hearings. KRS only requires one. So that's a discussion that Tyler and Mayor and I had about, you know, that ordinance and that we go above and beyond with the two public hearings. So I do think that's something that Planning and Zoning is going to look at and give us a recommendation. So I think that's something they're going to discuss at their next meeting because KRS, like I said, only one public hearing is what's required. We require two by ordinance. So I think that's something they're going to look at changing.
Okay.
Mayor, also, just to note on that ordinance, it actually has a wrong ordinance number on there also in that. So when that comes back to us, if it does, we'll have the correct number in there. Come to find out when we went looking, trying to track that down and how they come up with that number, it looks like there's a cover sheet that is incorrect in the Planning and Zoning books and it's probably been incorrect since it was done.
Yeah, since 1999, yeah. That's when Planning and Zoning was passed, so.
So that's basically what's going on. We didn't do our due diligence the first time, so kind of going back, redo what we should have done to begin with, and then we'll look at some point of looking at the two public hearings if it makes sense.
Is this number here the right order?
Yeah, that's the right ordinance. What I'm referring to, Billy.
Yes, that's the correct ordinance number.
The ordinance number I'm talking about is the 09199, and it's in there. That is incorrect.
Yeah.
Motion to rescind?
Yes, we do.
Motion by Billy. Second by Clayton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all. Next up is approval of the move of funds for LTADD engineering invoice from street engineering to parks engineering. What we did, if you guys remember last year, Lincoln Trail actually hired this engineer, and we kind of entered a, an agreement with them that we would get kind of first dibs on him. And at the beginning, they were basically looking for people to partner with them to help pay some of his salary. We didn't, we don't have to pay anything upfront. We basically just have to make a commitment to them that we'll use him and all that. So if you look back at the engineering fees, these were all firefighters' park. We had him out to look at where we want to put the new pickleball courts if that happens, but also some drainage issues. On the backside, kind of, we moved the track up to a drier spot, right Wes? So we need to get that old track up and do some drainage stuff in there, and that's what he, that's what this bill, this last bill is for. My thinking on it, it's better for us to use an engineer, let him draw up plans and everything, and that keeps us from thinking, well, this might work. Then it don't, we have to go back and do it again. So it makes a little sense, I think, to use somebody like that and get it right the first time, so. But that's what, all of these bills are centered at firefighters' park area over in there. Also looking at updating, making bigger the parking area there also. So he looked at that, too.
So do you have any plans on what his suggestions were as far as, I didn't know that we had even discussed the court expansion. I haven't heard anything about that since the Parks and Rec Committee meeting last year.
I think tourism's been looking into it. I don't know where they're at. Lori, do you? Have you heard anything lately?
No, I haven't.
Last I heard, they were wanting to do it, but I haven't heard.
Tourism wants to do the court expansion.
Right.
On the city's park, correct?
Basically what they did with the other pickleball court there. They want to put them back to back there, adjacent to one another.
And how will that interfere with the playground equipment that's already there?
Do they have to be moved?
No, not necessarily. There's, the part that slides down, you can move that to the other end of it, Scotty, is that correct?
Yes.
So you can rearrange how it, how you come out of it. I mean, we could move it if we needed to, but there is a way to move some of that sliding stuff over to the other side of it to keep, you know, away from the pickleball court and the fenced area there, so.
Has anybody looked at, Scotty, the lower end of the park down there on the other side of the fire station?
Down by Holly Hill Lane?
That was part of what he did the survey on and took some of the shots of the elevation code just to see. We're going to have a really hard time. That ground is so flat out there that in order to get any drainage, y'all are almost going to have to have that open down there because it's only about a foot drop from one to that. So if we were to build anything there, it's going to be difficult to get the.
I thought maybe it would be a good idea if they come off of Holly Hill Lane as an entrance maybe down there and maybe just build it up a foot, you know, for pickleball courts and maybe it might not look as congested up there.
You stay really wet there.
Billy, it is really wet, and if you, next time you're out there, look at it, and you can see that even the path that was built that we, that Wes and the guys constructed between Holly Hill and firefighters there, there's a tile under that, and they had to go back almost 40 feet in order to get enough drop on it to actually get it to drain.
It used to flood all the time on the end there.
Yeah, and so that helped it an awful lot, the work that they did out there just this pastime. But in order to, if we were to put something to size the footprint of a pickleball court there, it would make a pond between the two of them, more or less.
Well, where will the children's equipment go?
Clayton, the, that playset that we're talking about that's involved there is modular, and so the way that it's set up on the back end of it, it has a ladder coming up one side and a slide going down the end, and all of that can be rearranged. You can just simply take the slide from going off the end, turn it around, and put the ladder on the other side so that the slide is not out, and then there will be room to put the pickleball court in there and to be able to get around it and mow around it as well.
There'll be enough space in between the pickleball courts to mow between the courts and that playground equipment?
Terry, the, looking at the drawings and the mock-up that he had of it, that he set out, and it was just, it was just a, yes, it looks like there is. Now, we'll have to look at it and make certain, but his preliminary drawing showed that there was enough room for all that to fit and for everything to work.
Well, I know that with the courts that are currently there, because it looks like it was probably built up a little bit, too.
Yes.
There's water that stands right now in between that playground equipment and the courts.
You're correct, and part of the plan, and one of the reasons that we wanted an engineer to look at it, is that we're going to be able to take the dirt that will be moved from where the new parking area will be built and move it over in there, and that actually will redirect the water, and it should do away with that ditch at that point.
And where?
And it will push it around behind the playground equipment that's there, and so it should, it should actually dry all of that up and then make the whole area a lot more usable.
And where will the new parking be?
Between the parking that is there and the highway, that area in there, we're talking, looking at the possibility of developing that maybe into more parking and black.
You mean that field in, that field in front of the?
Yes, between the highway.
Just in front of the existing park.
And the existing park.
Bringing it out to the sidewalk area.
Well, there's a lot of children that plays out there on that. They was out there the other day playing football and kids running and playing, and where are we going to put if we?
I don't think that's, I don't think that's where you're thinking, where we're thinking.
No, I don't know what you're thinking.
I've never seen anybody up there.
There's a park right there now that's a tree zone. Let's mound it up.
Yeah, that's.
It would only go to where that part of shade structure is, basically, that up with the other park that was serving up.
Now, would they be taking out the circle, the turnaround circle there?
Yes, that would be incorporated into the new parking down there on that end, where the turnaround is now, when you go in and where you turn around, that'd actually be tied into that and come back up the highway. Again, those are just preliminary drawings that he made. There are a lot of different things that you can do, and it's much, much cheaper to make those mistakes and to look at those kinds of things on paper than it is to go out there and do it and then have to change it. And, you know, this guy's really, really talented at space and being conscientious of space use, and, you know, I'm sure he'd be happy to work with us to try and utilize that the very best that we can.
If they, if they put any more children's, was to expand and put some more children's equipment in there, where would they be put?
Clayton, really, the only place that even there is to put it now would be to put it on down toward Holly Hill Lane, and if we were to build that up and redirect that water, it actually would dry that up and make it a lot more usable, so you could add some more playground equipment down there. Right now, it's so wet that I don't think anyone would want to put playground equipment there, but I think if we can redirect the water that's there when we install the new pickleball courts and get some drainies that actually works down the backside, it should make that ground more usable to us.
Well, it was, it just bothers me because, you know, that was built, Ronald and them, when they built that, they built that for children to play on, and I don't want us taking our children's, you know, playtime away. We've got, we've got a lot of kids that can't go and pay out money for stuff, and a lot of kids play there, and we don't want to take away from them. I just.
I understand what you're saying. I can't, personally, I can't see how that would take away from anything. It actually would make some of the ground a little more usable that is so wet now and it's low down through there. If we can get the drainies corrected.
I don't think it'll hinder them in any way.
I'm sorry, Billy.
I don't think it'll hinder them in any way.
I don't think it will, no.
Here's my, here is my only concern. I sat in a Parks and Rec Committee meeting last year and was told during that meeting that that playground equipment that you were talking about, that, you know, switching the ends.
Yes.
That that was not safe, and it was going to be taken down to put the new pickleball courts there. So here is my fear, and I said then, I will vote against this every single time it comes up, and was told that it would not come up for a vote. So my fear is, we're going to go along this path, and then additional courts are going to be built, parking's going to be extended, and then all of the sudden, this playground equipment is going to be gone. It's not unsafe. My grandson plays on that equipment. I'm on that with him. What they have down on the other end, it's not suitable for toddlers. There are so many holes and heights in it that even with me up there with him, I have a hold of him so that he doesn't venture off the side of it. So that is my fear with the additional pickleball courts.
I can understand that.
You are just the sounding board right now because you have the microphone, and I'm just, I'm just telling you, that's, that's my fear. And what that, the intention of that park, what it was built for, for the most highly populated section of the city of Litchfield with the children that live in that, that's all they have. And I realize that more people than just the kids in North Litchfield are at that park, and there's more adults walking the tracks. I understand that. I love that, but we can't take away from them. The pickleball courts, if they were put where they were presented to the council initially as being put up there, we wouldn't even be having this issue.
Well, we put the pickleball courts where we thought it made the most sense for the most people, and I've been in several conversations about additional pickleball courts. I've never heard anybody say that they wanted to take anything away from that park.
Right.
I mean, a park, I understand children, I understand all that, but a park is meant for the public.
Exactly.
Everybody, children, adults, out-of-towners, drifters, whatever.
I get it. I understand, and that's how it's being used right now. We just need to be careful, and we need to take care of the things that we have before we start making additions to other things.
Well, I don't agree with that 100%. I think if you're not moving forwards, you're moving backwards.
It'll always have playground equipment on it.
One.
Always.
I would just like for us to take a deeper dive maybe on that lower section, Billy, to see if we maybe couldn't develop that. I don't know.
You just have to build it up, and then you're going to have to find out where the water's going to go.
Yeah. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of property out there at that park.
Yeah.
And a good portion of what's left is not being used because we have drainage issues.
Right.
And that's what we were trying, part of what we're trying to do here, is fix the drainage issues, because right now, until July, I doubt that they'll be able to get a mower through it.
I agree.
I mean, it's just, it's just swampy, and that's, that's part of what this was for, is trying to alleviate that.
So what do you need?
All we need is just to, a motion and a second to move these funds from, to Parks and Rec from streets and.
We have a nut park that we don't even utilize, so.
So Wesley does not need these funds for, there's nothing that we need this for?
No, these were actually funds that we put in for this engineer.
Okay.
But we didn't split them up. Next, this next budget, we probably need to split them up, some into Parks and Rec, some into streets and things like that.
And you had to put it somewhere where it was, you know, more likely to be, you have a nut park.
We didn't realize, I mean, it was our first go-around, so we didn't, we didn't think about, I figured since we were doing parking lot and things like that out there that we could get it out of streets and everything, but Springer says, no, we have to, we have to move it, so.
Well, the services have already been done, correct?
Yes.
Well, I mean, we have no option other than to pay this.
Not really.
So move.
Need to make a motion, don't we?
Motion by George.
Second.
Second by Billy.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, before we move, I'll save it for any business.
Okay. Discussion of E-911 funds request. I think most of you got an email, I think, last week talking about this. We've been requested by, by the county and 911 to provide some funding for them. Most of their shortfall has been due to landline phones being shut off. I talked to Kevin this morning, and that's where they got their funding before they got the landline phones, where everybody's dropping their landline phones, and so they're, I think there are some, there's some plans, some things being batted around, other things to do, but right now, they're asking for $50,000.
Additional.
Additional, yes.
Additional. We're at 20 now, are we?
Going ahead.
No, we're, we're at 80.
Eighty.
Eighty.
It's 20, it's 20 a quarter.
And I talked to Judge Henderson. The only concern I have is that outline, our cities don't contribute.
Yeah, Caneyville.
Because they say they don't have the funding.
I agree.
It's hard for me to accept that.
It says right here in the paper that they're, they're up to date, and they're paying their bills, and Clarkson is paying all their bills off, and they've got plenty of money. The mayor up there said, and Caneyville, they're adding on a big place to their fire department, and our fire department ends up doing most of the, when they have a fire down there, Billy knows, our fire department, how many times do we roll down there and go down there and cover their, cover them, and they've got money for, to do these things?
I mean, I'm not expecting 50 grand or 20 grand.
Right.
Just give me something.
Yeah.
Give me five grand from each of them. Give me, I mean, I understand we're the seed of the city or the county, okay? And we probably utilize it more than anybody with the police department, fire department. I mean, I think utilities has gotten away from them now, so.
Can dispatch provide any records of how many calls are coming from the different cities and kind of break it down to percentages?
Lori has that information. Here's the thing, guys.
I don't have Clarkson, Caneyville.
From my point of view, is we can't do without them.
Oh, I agree.
We can't. If we, I told Lori, if we tried to do our own dispatch, we couldn't use 911. We'd have to hire probably five or six people to staff it.
I agree.
Rear around. Equipment, I mean, we really can, and I get, I get the thing that other cities aren't funding them. I don't know what you do about that, Billy. I really don't.
Just for a new radio system or what?
They've already got it.
They've already got it. It's, they've had to replace, they've replaced equipment that was.
Over million, it was outdated. It was all analog, and it's outdated, and they've, I mean, over a million dollars they spent on there, and they had to do it.
I think we should do it, be a good neighbor, but also I think we should look forward and make sure that the shortfall doesn't happen every year where it's a continual thing.
Yeah, I think we upped it, what, two years ago, and we took it from, took it from fire department or part of it.
We took it from 15, and we took additional five from the fire department.
10, wasn't it?
It's five per quarter, I think. We pay them 20 per quarter, 15,000 comes out of the PD, and then five comes out of the fire dues.
Yeah. I mean, everybody knows, the police department probably uses it more than anybody.
Yes.
Or probably the police department.
Well, we don't have any option. I mean, we have to do it, but I would like to, and I'm assuming that the judge executive and fiscal court are looking at options for the next fiscal year because we can't continue to do this. I mean, we can't continue to every year add on $20,000. I mean, we, we have other projects that we're working on, too, but we have to, we've got to support our 911 right now. So, I mean, we can do it now as long as they have a long-term goal that they are setting forth, and it's going to be.
Well, that's, like I say, Judge Henderson does have some, some things he's looking at, but I would encourage, I would encourage everyone to talk to him about that because I'm not going to put words in his mouth.
Right, absolutely.
So if you do have any questions about his long-term goal of funding it, I would just email or call him, and he can, he can give you some, he can give you more info than I know.
Well, I mean, you have more resources now with fire dues. You have more resources, and I've talked to Judge Henderson quite extensively about it, and he, he just didn't want to take away what they're getting now and put a hurt on them or whatever, but I can remember when we didn't have dues.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I mean, several departments, I mean, we're getting $100,000 or whatever it is from our dues, and, and I understand, I know, it's a need, it's a have-to, I understand, but I just don't want to bow down and say yes without having a little bit of.
Yeah.
Say-so and, or knowing that, like Terry says, we, we can't do it every year to do that, unless they just put their hand to the fire and.
We need, and we need to talk to Clarkson and Caneyville since they're doing great now.
Well, we don't, but.
No, we don't.
Not us.
I mean, but they need to talk to them about.
The county.
And if you got questions about that, Clayton, I would call Judge Henderson and talk to him.
So we're giving, giving what now, throughout the city? 80?
80, yeah. It's 20 a quarter.
So they're wanting 50 added to that.
Yeah. As soon as we can.
Plus 20 from the fire department, so.
No, it's counting it all, ain't it?
Do what?
80's all of it, the whole city, fire and.
Yes.
It's everything.
It's 15 a quarter for the police department and five, five a quarter for the fire department.
Yeah, so 20 grand.
So it's 20 per quarter.
I'm sorry, I can't understand you.
So they want 80,000 plus 50 additional, is that what you said?
Yes.
One time?
No.
Forever? This is, this is our new, what we're going to take?
The 50 is a one-time thing.
Yes, that's what I understood.
Okay.
I didn't understand it that way, I didn't.
My, my understanding is they're going to look at maybe trying to up everybody to maybe 100 to 110.
Everybody, meaning the county.
Like I said, I'm confused.
Well, the ones that are putting into it.
Who else is putting into it? Do we know?
No. It is, let me see here. I don't know.
The jail, the county.
That's right. And us.
And us. I think there's one.
I think there's one other.
I think they said something about the hospital, but I can't, I can't remember what it was they contributed.
Yeah.
I think there was four, four entities that were. I read it somewhere in the paper or somewhere.
So, but what we're doing tonight is just the additional 50, correct?
So, Mayor, you think it's one time?
That's what I've understood it. Now, I do, I did, like Lori, I've heard numbers mentioned that we needed to up it more per year and not 50,000 more. I can't remember what numbers he said.
I don't think, I never asked him if it was continuous or just one time. I don't think, I just assumed that it was.
I don't think.
Continuous.
I don't think they're looking for this amount because, you know, with this, we'd be, 130 would be our number for, for the year. I don't think, there's never been any mention of this being an ongoing thing. Now, he has mentioned that we might look it up and, for everybody, everybody's, but I haven't, I haven't heard him say for sure on that yet, and I don't know that he's decided that for sure or not.
How long have we been doing the 80? Three or four years?
I'm going to say maybe three years. I can't remember.
We were on the budget committee, too.
Yeah.
Whenever we, and I don't know if it was two years or four years ago.
I believe it was four. Well, it might have been three because it doesn't matter. I mean, they were upping it this year.
I can go back and look. I've got a spreadsheet of it, but I could go back and look, but it's, it's been, I'm going to say at least two years, probably three.
I wonder what, I can't remember what it was before we raised it.
It was six. It was sixty.
Sixty and raised to eighty.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now it's raising to one thirty.
Well, just for this one year.
I'm, whoever makes the motion, make it clear that it's a one-time raise, that way it reflects in Laurie's minutes that it's.
I'm going to send him a text and ask.
Well, I'm going to make the motion right now before you can do that, I'm going to make a motion to, um, for the fifty thousand dollar one time.
That will need to include.
One time.
The budget.
He says one time.
Okay.
Yeah.
One time, I don't know what else to add.
Just that we, we, it, we, we do need in there that it's going to amend the budget too, so.
I'll second the motion.
A motion by Terry and second by Tootie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up is approval of the National Day of Prayer proclamation that will be going on, hopefully judicial billing, May the first. We did this last week, we just need a motion and a second to, to approve this.
I will make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion by Tim.
Second.
Second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, next up, we will do visitors, do we have anybody that wants to address the council? You want? Okay, yeah, you can come up. Come up to that microphone, yes.
Thank you very much for helping me, I got a judge order for, on my, um, on the defendant's motion, I brought a copy for to end the deferral prosecution agreement earlier. And also I talked with the judge on the phone and the judge was agree to edit, uh, and, uh, so he kind of said that he will give me a dismissal because of, according to the law, it will take restriction from my travel. And I can apply for the American passport to go to Ukraine to visit my mom. And, uh, as a second order, he will give me to, uh, to register as persistent violent felony offenders who carjacked the cars, don't provide, uh, their foster, uh, or adopted parents or own parents phone number and address. Like I did, uh, file initial disclosure and include in initial disclosure my, uh, my own parents in Ukraine, phone number and the address. Also my certificate of naturalization because of what the police officers like to do, they go to the apartment complexes knocking in the apartment door and coming inside without any, any reason. Because of, it did happen, um, last week, uh, and I was observing, I came to home and was walking to my apartment and saw the cross the road, police officer knocking the door and came inside in the apartment and it was their children there. Then I heard some kind, uh, loud, uh, noise, I don't know if he, he, uh, took his fist and knock in the wall or something fell down, I don't know exactly what did happen. But when he came out, I asked him, why did you come in in the apartment? You know that you're a persistent violent felony offender, that you, um, carjacked the car, uh, don't provide your foster or adopted parents phone number. Uh, because of it, I can assume because of strang, strangulation and arson, you can be charged easily, not paying car insurance registration and taxes since eighteen years old. Because when I'm asking you how much your car insurance was cost, you're telling me, I don't know. How much your car was cost, you're telling me, I don't know. Why did you go? Plus, uh, recruitment, it's a constantly recruitment, they recruit more, uh, mm, uh, those boyfriends who carjacked from another state and bringing the, the car in this estate. And then they are looking for them for the job and giving them a job as a police officer, giving them, not looking everywhere where they can do that. I don't know, I'm not, uh, following them, but I know there is a lot of, of them. And, um, it's kind of against the law, you know, it's, uh, and what do you, what can you tell me in your defense? He just was looking at me and then I said to him that you came not with empty hands because of, in the, um, Radcliffe Police Department, they have my certificate of naturalization. Which is, uh, can be, uh, storage in an evidences room, uh, that I came to this country legally. And according to US Code twenty-eight, paragraph thirteen thirty-eight is saying that people who came immigrants legally to this country and don't reside in one state and living in one state. They cannot be, uh, charged and no hearings in, in the district court. So it's open for you the hands and giving you a lots of, and opportunities to protect those recruiters who you recruit from another state. No, anyway, and I said, you are kind of like a blind, I mean, all the police officers in the United States and especially in Kentucky and other states as well, blind, deaf, autistic, and now drinker. I said, what are you guys doing in the, uh, this is, in the police department, what kind of, uh, the law you are learning? How do you show respect and love to the law? How do you follow the law? How do you, if you are saying that you came for the kind of checkup, what kind of checkup? But he didn't say that, he said that he came to promote and participate in the prostitution activities. So I said, no, it needs to be done some kind, you know, to show that, uh, people have to love and follow the law and comply with the law.
Ma'am, do you live in the city of Litchfield?
Uh-huh, well, in city in the Litchfield too because of my judge is.
Yes or no? Yes or no, what, what address do you live at?
I live in Radcliffe, Kentucky, but my special judge, he is a judge golf in, uh, Grayson County, Litchfield, and he was appointed to my cases. And by the way, he has his own foster children, which didn't steal the car, comply and follow the law, you know?
I, I appreciate your story, my heart goes out to you.
But thank you very much for helping me.
Yeah, um, but you probably want to take it up with the city of Radcliffe.
Yeah, but thank you very much for helping me, it was very, very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. And, you know, just for, um, clarifying the minutes, I, the city of Litchfield, I, I don't believe has helped in any way just because the issues you've presented to the city on numerous occasions. And I, I know you've, I think this may be the second meeting you've come to, uh, the city of Litchfield, looking at me looking over some of the issues you'd presented involving, um, as you said, so yourself, your, your criminal issues. After taking a look at those and speaking to the prosecutor, I, I don't think the city of Litchfield had any connection and, and cannot provide any help to you and did not provide any assistance to you, so.
Right, I just don't know that they would have to make in the city of Litchfield to ask the people to build friends, you know? When I restore the car, you break the law and comply with the law and trying to find the hidden key, was the boyfriend hiding it? And restore the car and doesn't have the cars to drive, you know? And they need to feed, they need to eat, they need to live, and it's kind of hard.
Yes, um, I think we're on to that unfinished business now.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, unfinished business, Billy?
No, sir.
Terry?
No.
Tootie? Clayton?
Uh, yeah, I'll ask, um, Sergeant Huber, uh, Sergeant there, um, over at City Park, somebody tore that up over there extensively. Uh, did they catch who it was and what was doing?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
I can speak to that, Clayton, I got an, actually we got a phone call today telling me who did it and where they live. So I was going to talk to David tomorrow about that, but, uh, said he'd been bragging about it around, around the community, laughing about it. And on the post that Parks and Rec put up on Facebook, he was actually one of the people on there that was, uh.
Do we need?
Talking about it.
Have we got enough cameras over there to catch anything that goes on or?
Not really, uh.
Shouldn't we get some more cameras?
Didn't we get pictures of what they did?
Yeah, as far as cameras that can see people going in and out, I, I don't know what.
Yeah, he posted on Facebook and I posted.
I don't know how clear the cameras we've got are.
Right.
We probably do need to look at, at upgrading some of that and, uh, Mr. Mattingly, that's been helping us some with IT stuff, has helped us with some stuff at animal shelter and public works, force cameras, we might be able to look at, at getting some over there. The hard part for that, up in there where that happened, would be getting power to a camera or something like that from, because you, you've got to come from the pavilion. I don't, well, there's some power out in that field there in the, for the Christmas decorations.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
So you could probably tap into it, but I hope, uh, I hope by tomorrow afternoon, somebody's been able to contact this young man, ask him what his intentions were.
Right.
So. And see if he'll, see if he'll continue to tell the same story he's been telling everybody in these communities, so.
Well, if he's under.
By the way, he's not from this community, so.
Well, if he's underage, we need to hold his parents responsible.
Yeah. All right, any, any other unfinished business, Clayton?
No.
Okay, George?
Yeah, Wes, the parking over by Hometown Hangout really looks good.
Yeah.
If anybody hasn't been by to see that, uh, want to come in you on that, thank you.
It turned out really good.
Yeah.
I think you can save an extra spot there too last week.
I noticed by the other day and everything was full and included that parking too, and I think they've got like six more parking areas there, so, looks nice.
No, sir, that's it. Okay, Laurie?
No.
Erleene? Wes?
I, I just want to thank everybody that came out to the cleanup, uh, last week or whenever, Saturday that we did get to have it. Uh, I don't have my figures right off on exactly how much we got, but we did get a lot of trash picked up and covered a lot of town, so just thank you all for coming out and helping us with that.
We do appreciate.
We had some good food, Tootie done a good job.
I was going to ask if the cook, if the cook did any good. Okay, new business, Billy?
No, sir.
Terry?
I have a couple of things, uh, this engineer that we've used a couple of times. Can we get the engineer to go to DeWitt Park? And, I mean, that would be a, obviously the last flooding that we have was extraordinary.
Yeah.
Uh, but that park has flooded numerous times, maybe not to that extent. I think that that would be a good spot for to use it.
I've used it a few times.
Tell us about, tell us about Wes.
Well, there is old, doesn't it?
Yeah, and I, we've looked at that when the flooding, there's really not a good drain for that, I mean.
It goes to a cave.
It goes in a cave and.
Right under tracks there.
You might be able to redirect some of it down the tracks behind, like Turkey's Trailer Park.
Mm-hmm.
But opposite from that, everything's uphill, so I don't know, you know, we might, we might be able to look at, at something back along the tracks.
Possibly, but once, once you get past a little bit and I hear it starts to peel back there too, so it's kind of all drains to there and it goes into a cave and we had so much water that I'm sure that the cave was full.
It drained pretty quick.
Right.
It did after.
I mean, it, I mean, this, it's happened.
Oh, it does.
Other than this, I thought that that might be a good use for.
Yeah, we can get him to look at it, see if he's got any suggestions, like I say, we just, it's kind of in a hole and uphill on, on every side and I don't know, I don't know where we could.
Not without, somewhere.
We do like Billy Hughes told me one time, he said he, his driveway, I said, well, drill, come over here and drill to hit air. He said, that's my drain, so.
Uh, the next thing, we were over at Bevel Park the other day, turning in off of the bypass, um, they really need a new sign. The sign that's up on the bypass where you turn in to go to Bevel Park and the softball parks, it was nice whenever it was put up, I don't know how many years ago, the, the paint is faded, it's just, we can do better. We need a new, better sign for Bevel Park coming off the park, coming off the bypass, we, so. We also need a better sign for the softball complex. Because, I mean, right now it's got the park sign and then the softball sign right underneath it, I think that we can probably.
We can look at that, we actually talked to a gentleman, Brian Signs, today about doing Kelly's sign.
Right.
And we went and looked at that sign and measured it before we went to him with this one, so we can look at it and it, it, it is getting a little crusty. So we can look at it and see, uh, I'm sure he makes another one. Yeah, we can see, we, we.
There's such a nice park, we need a nice entrance, we need.
You talking about the Sanders, you're like Thompson Allen complex, yeah.
That one is, yeah, that one is right, it looks like they're both made out of wood.
Yeah, they are.
Um, there's that one and then the actual Bevel Park sign is right above it.
Okay.
Both of those need to be replaced.
Yeah, we can look at, we can get a price from him, uh, I'm sure he'll be contacting us soon with the other side, so.
And I've got one more thing that Scotty said he already checked on, but I just wanted to, uh, I've had several softball parents come, talking about the, uh, how the benches and the dugouts. They get there early so that they can get the dugout with the bench that doesn't fall over, tip over, and I'm like, I don't even know what you're talking about. Well, apparently it was dirt and dirt had come, had holes in it because it's a ball field and a dugout. And then come to find out, uh, because I asked Scotty, I said, can't we just put concrete in them like they have at the baseball fields? I mean, we need to take care of our softball fields too, and he said, there is concrete under it, so there's concrete under the dirt. He said, there's about this much dirt on top of all the concrete, so if we could get somebody to, uh, clean the dirt off of all of the concrete in the dugout, so at least the benches set level, that would be good.
That would be a Tammy question.
No, I'm just making a comment.
Well, that would be a Tammy, Park's direct director.
We can, we can look at it, we can get, we can get Trent to look at it with us too, because he's, he's running all baseball and softball down there. And, uh, I can, I, I've not seen that, but I can understand because a lot of dirt washes off that hill of softball, it just, that's where it goes, you know? So we can look at it and see if we had to, we could Tim over there and hose the dirt out of it.
I don't know that Seafield's ever been concrete.
Yeah, you.
A and B is.
I don't know if it is now or not.
I don't remember, Laurie, I don't remember Seafield ever been.
Did they say which ones they?
I was never on Seafield, but I know where he was.
I know that they have played or been on Seafield because they said it's just full of, the child made the comment of not liking to play on that field because of all of the rocks that are on it. And the parent made the comment, well, this is similar to a, a field somewhere else in the community that you're going to be playing on a lot, so.
If we, we, we need, we need to do what we intend to do with that, that program over there.
I agree.
So if, uh, if it needs working on the fields, dugouts, whatever, we need, we need to do that.
I know that Seafield has rocks on it and all of the benches and the dugouts are not level.
Okay, we'll go over and look at it and see.
If we can get concrete, just like the baseball, that would be great. And if they all have working lights on the fields, that would be even better.
I don't know if any lights that are out right now, Scotty, we haven't been told of any, have we? I know we've put up some LEDs on one field, right? Two, okay. And hope to do the, the other one too, so that'll, that'll cut out a lot of that problems because those high-pressure sodiums, whatever, they, LED should outlast them by a decade probably or more, so. But we'll go, uh, we'll go and look all, check all that out and look at it, see what he's doing.
And since I'm on a Parks and Rec thing tonight, um, and I've, I've also turned this in, it's been brought up two or three times, there's, the scoreboard on field three is not working or if it comes on, it goes off and doesn't come back on.
On softball, right?
No, this is on baseball.
Okay. Is, is field three the big one?
No idea.
I have no idea.
I'll just take.
No, I was there at a game a few weeks ago and the scoreboard wasn't working on, if you walk down into the park, the first feeling you left there.
Okay.
The, where the middle kids play.
We're early in the season, we need things to work.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed that, they, they were having a little tournament down there and, uh, I noticed that nobody, the scoreboard wasn't working, so we'll look at that too, I'll find out tomorrow what the deal is on that. Tammy, you hadn't said anything about it? Haven't heard anybody, anybody, I just thought maybe at the tournament it was, because the city don't do the tournaments, I figured it was a manpower issue, but I don't know that for sure.
Right.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Tootie, new business?
No, sir.
Clayton?
No, sir.
No. Tim?
Uh, just have a book for all the council members, um, if, uh, you want to look at it, it's, it's what they say is the bible for economic development. I just have a book for all the council members. If you want to look at it, it's, it's what they say is the Bible for Economic Development, second edition, so it has been updated. If you don't want the book, I understand, but please just give it away to somebody that might use it. There you go, George. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Like Christmas. Or early Christmas, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cam.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Lori?
No.
Erlene?
No.
Wes?
The only thing that I have is, if weather permitting and everything works out, we'll try to start doing demo on the house on Cable Road this week.
Good deal.
I know a lot of people asking, concerned about it, so fingers crossed.
Good.
But that's all I've got.
Okay. Thanks, Wes. Yeah, there'll be a lot of happy people when they hear that, and they see the equipment rolling.
Exactly.
All right, other business, the chamber luncheon for May will be on the eighth at noon. Please let Lori know until later than Monday, May fifth, if you plan to attend. And there'll be an Animal Shelter Committee meeting on May fifth, before our next council meeting at five o'clock. So, which side will that be, Lori? Do you know?
That is Billy, Terry, and Tootie.
Okay. Y'all get to come back?
We get to come back there, though.
Man, we're three meeting in a row.
All right.
All right, if there isn't any other concerns or comments, I'll entertain a motion in a second to adjourn.
Thank, thank Officer Hoover for being here with us. I know he's a busy man, in and out, but thank you for being here. Appreciate you and everything that you do, and the department.
Sit in your official seat next time.
Yeah. I, I listen close, of course, I dispatched for twenty-five years, and so, you know, it's an important part of it. For me, this dispatch system is, and you officers, protection and everything, and we just want to thank the police department, fire department, Wes, the whole bunch, that does everything that they do. And that's what I had to say, and I make a motion with adjourn.
All right. Motion by Clayton, second, second by Tootie. All in favor?